Search for the microphone button there.
I call.
Good to see you. Good to see you.
I call this meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Please rise for a moment of silence followed by a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, with all my nation under God and with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mr. Marks, roll call.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mrs. Baldwin.
Here.
Mr. Finney.
Here.
Mrs. Lawson, absent. Mr. Livingston, here.
Here.
Mr. Roke.
Here.
Mrs. Rohrbaugh, absent. Mr. Walker.
Here.
And Mr. Zep, absent.
All right, thank you, Mr. Marks. Looks like we do not have any Patriots for the hearing of the Patriots on the agenda tonight, so we'll move into the Secretaries' report.
All right, so tonight I need a motion on 3.1, the turf and track replacement.
Motion accepted.
Thank you. So thanks for everybody for coming. We know it was a little spur-of-the-moment kind of situation, but we want to stay on track with the time, so we can get this project done by, you know, the time fall sports start. So tonight we have Hugh from the LA Sports here to talk a little bit about the project. We've put this project out for bid, got some really good prices, and the best price we got was from Field Turf, and they're the same company, I believe, that did the last project here, the turf field. Pretty reputable company, so Hugh, if you're ready to take over, you know.
Yeah, hello, everybody. Yeah, we're looking at, with the feasibility study we did a little while ago, there's a couple additions, things with the stadium, but I think we presented it to the township, six, seven, eight months ago, and looked at the renovations to the concession stand and all that stuff, and possible parking lot, and we're talking with the township. There's still some things up in the air about what really needs to be done there, so instead of dragging this out and pulling in those other things because this was needed, we've kind of separated that into its own standalone plan right now, which is what you're acting on tonight. This is a turf replacement. It's also replacing the 1D area with a new, which is currently, currently grass is going to be made into turf, and we also are wagging it to the A lane, and we also have some walkway renovations, and we were able to get it under the threshold to avoid going to the next level of permitting in the Conservation District acreage-wise. So we're already dealing with stormwater management plan with the township. It's currently under review right now. We worked, our engineer had worked with the township engineer, figured out, you know, had any questions, trying to get the answers, answer at that time as he was designing.
That's a quick question. Does that help with the overall cost if we do construction with a parking lot and some of the seating?
This is, this is, this is a, kind of a unique structure. Those who are doing these, doing these facilities, this is what they do for a living, and I would not recommend tying everything else in, because there wouldn't be anything responsibleized because it's two different contracts.
Okay, I just meant from like a stormwater perspective.
Oh, no.
Disturbed land, if we're just underneath that threshold now, what would we be under again if we did another smaller project?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, 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 yeah, no, we won't. And the thing was, the fact that what we're doing is removing the track surface, we're building the track, repaving the track, and then as part of that, the turf field will be put in. Normally, I will say with this, with this type of work, it's still when you have a track involved, once you pave, you have 28 days to let it cure before you put the track surface in. Sometimes what happens in the fall, depending on the backlog with other projects, the turf field will be ready to play on, and the track will be paved, but you won't have track surface in on it until there's a gap in somewhere where you can come out and deal with surface, or they may depend, because like I said, that 28-day time to cure is the key thing, because if you don't let it cure, you put the track surface down within a year or so, all of a sudden it'll start coming up. So you gotta, you gotta make sure, you gotta make sure you cure it. So we are, we did have some conduits and stuff, we're also laying on this, there was some talk about that, in order to provide power to the field, so you have those pull boxes underneath, so if, you know, for graduations, something, if you need to, you have power, you have power there, so you don't have to run the extension cords across the turf and whatnot. Anything else that's still there? The goalposts, everything else is as it is. The contractor who constructed this, how many years ago was that?
2013.
So 12 years ago. It's basically the same team, so they're familiar with the site. So Land Tech is the contractor. Field turf is the vendor, you know, the co-stars contracts come through the turf vendor, and they 99% of the time use Land Tech on the projects in Pennsylvania. So we've been working with them for 20 years plus, so. Anything else?
The life of this, so we got 12 years out of the old one. Are we looking at 12 again?
Yeah, yeah, 12, yeah, the way the system are looking now, you're getting the maintenance, which you do, you do as a district, 12 years. The warranty's for eight, we've seen usually about it's 12 years is when, you know, your GMAC's reading is not bad for the age of the system, but it's getting to a point where repairs, you can repair it though so much because over time the seams will pull or the inlays will.
That was one of my questions, like what deteriorates? It's the seams that.
The seams, yeah.
Because it looks fine, you know, you look at it, but I guess if you're doing a closer inspection, that's where the problem.
Yeah, like, well, I'm a coach over in Hemfield, and our field looks fine. You can go up and lift, you can pull up parts of it.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, they come out to repair it, but it's just so much, you can take oh so much maintenance on it, then it just gets deep. But I think track is the, the track is.
Track is.
Tracks, yeah, that needs upgrading, that needs, yeah, that's, that's old. So, pretty much a straightforward plan. We had, we had the five quotes. Two, you know, was from Field Turf, Keystone was Shaw Turf. Shaw Turf is mostly, they're, they're a national brand, but for some reason they have never really cracked central Pennsylvania. Two, the Sprint Turf and Hay Turf, who's, they actually use the same contractor as Sprint Turf, so. Oh, you know, no fly-by-nights. Most of the fly-by-nighters are, 20 years ago, there were fly-by-night turf firms all in the place. That's kind of, kind of dotted out right now. So, yeah, I think we're pretty much, you know, straightforward, and the key, the key is to get the approval from the township, so we're going to follow up with them and make sure, because, you know, the way the Conservation District approval would be nowadays, if any here are developed, it's painful, you know, through the process. So, the fact we were able to avoid that, you know, particularly just trying to stick with the schedule and things, that helped.
So what would the schedule look like if it was approved?
Well, if, we're looking to, you know, approval within the next, within the next month, so it'd be ready to go in June for construction. And that's, that's the key, because they've had the plans down for probably close to a month now, so we're starting something short. So we're, you know, engineers in the follow-up. Actually, this was kind of a cutoff week, just to follow up and say, hey, you know, any questions, anything you need. So, but yeah, so right now the plans do show, also include a press box being renovated. Doesn't mean you have to do it, but it's there, it's there because it's part of the plan. We're talking with the township, this is kind of viewed as the first phase of it, so it doesn't lock you into having to do that. It's just something, you know, your stormwater accommodates, accommodates, which really it's impervious over impervious. When you put, so you should be permanently licensed, should cut down. down any, any grief with the township on that. So, it's when, the big, the big thing with this eventually will be if we needed a concession stand, the parking lot, which is, is a bugger to figure out what to get the ADA down below there, because really, nothing is easy. They're just grading lines, and we all know about grading, existing contours and stuff, so, yeah, yeah, so let's try to, try to keep that in mind.
Do we have an idea of the total stadium renovation proposed budget, not just the space? Could you ever come up with that?
I have to say the feasibility study, if we.
Because we talked about leachures and concession, if we ever want that fully kind of stopped, kind of bring it to that roadblock with the township, so let's just focus on the, let's just focus on the track and the state and the field, let's get that done. We knew we could get that done, we figured we revisit the rest of the stadium after we do this project.
Yeah, I can't, because it was, because we got to a point with the feasibility study where we kind of stopped, but we didn't get that.
We also wanted to know from the board how far they want to go, right? Like, we don't want to do things that you're not comfortable with, right?
Yeah, and, and I think we all know the ADA access is, well, I won't say non-existent, you are providing, you are providing something for that, but nowadays, that's, that is often what we're doing, updated facilities and stuff, that is a big thing, you know, new fields all require it.
So is my understanding, if we don't disturb existing or grandfathered, but as soon as we.
As soon as you touch it, then, then, it depends on the code officer, but usually as soon as you touch it, then, then you, then you have to get the ADA access, and then it just dominates.
And then this proposal by Land Tech or Field Turf, is this, and maybe it was mentioned somewhere, I missed it, but is this like time of materials not to exceed, or?
Well, it's a lump sum, it's a lump sum.
Okay.
So, I don't, I don't recall, and neither did the contractor, I talked to Todd about any, we have allowances in there for rock removal and stuff, we're not really anticipating anything, so there's some money that would, would come out. I couldn't quote exactly what that number is, but, I mean, other numbers, other numbers you're probably talking, I think what other people provided is probably something like 30, 30,000 or so, so that's possibly, that could come out again, because that was folded in, we had that kind of preemptive, because usually that's the surprise rock, unsuitable soil. If they have the damage, some of the paving somewhere, we actually have allowance in there for them to fix that, so that, I doubt they're going to damage it, but we keep it there just in case.
So it's padded a little bit?
It is, I mean, I don't, we don't expect any screwballs from the township, because again, we were communication with them all the way through the design process, so, but with all approvals, you know, money in hand, so, but I think the sense our engineers get that it's, you know, things, things should be fine, but, yeah, I think.
To Brian's point then, at the bottom, where it says prices not include, and I have a couple highlighted, I was just curious, like, the electrical work, utilities, what other, what other expenses could we anticipate, or are you?
They, yeah, because, you know, like, they're going to be doing, they're going to be doing the con boxes and conduits, but they're not doing electrical work, so they're basically putting that in for eventual electrical work, you know, I don't know if you have a.
We'll do that in-house, but not true.
Yeah, I say you can do that in-house.
Did we see any other expenses, like where it says prices not include, that?
I did look through that, I did not see anything that jolted out, I think they were just, I mean, I'm trying to pour up myself, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean.
But I, I didn't, when I went through, as Kenneth mentioned it too, I, I didn't see anything that really jolted me and said, well, this is third, I'm going to try to coin tie us.
Right, like a stormwater pollution prevention plan, what is that, what does that even mean? Like, is that something we have to have?
Sounds expensive.
No, no, that's, yeah, that's, that is, no, they, they don't require it for their fields, that's more building projects with the solid and, and everything else. But, and again, the one thing that could possibly come up is item, item J, which is unsuitable soils, but your field's already built, so, you know.
Any place you would have it, where the D area.
Where the D area is, it'd sort of be very minimal as it is, so, and the milling, we did boars of the track, the track is, four inches are slightly under all the way around, so sometimes it will happen, because you need at least four inches to melt, or close to four inches to melt, if they go around and melt it, all of a sudden paving starts to deflect or something. I don't expect that here. I mean, it was paved before, it wasn't an issue, so it's, you know, and again, we do that testing, have the time to make sure, because years ago, West Shore kept having issues with their track, we went and cored it, and they had, it's basically a house driveway, it was two inches over six, which is, you need to actually have a road cross section for a track, so that's, they wondered why, no one knew, because it was been that way for 10, 15 years. So that way they had to totally build, you don't hear in this case, just know it.
There is one thing we found in there that we asked to be looked into or changed, and that was under conditions, about the payback, it was under, I think, page eight.
Yeah.
Page eight, under conditions, it mentioned about how we would pay them under B, pretty much 50% upfront, 40% when they ship the, you know, materials, and we found that that's not accurate.
Yeah, that's, I reached out to the Field Turf rep, Field Turf rep, they sent an email, we'll follow up, you know, or, because every time we worked, I, I actually was surprised, you know, when Todd reached out to me, I said, this has not come up before, and every project we've had, it's always been a monthly payout, you know, it's never this, and the rep there is like, no, we'll strike it, you know, and so I said, and he sent an email saying they will, we'll follow up and make sure we get a letter for that, but I've never ever seen them do that, so.
And then from a capital perspective, we have one or two capital accounts.
So this is coming from the capital projects or construction account that has $1 million in.
And we have another capital account as well?
We have another capital reserve account.
Which has how much?
Over 2 million.
And you said four and two, and I think, I'm 99.9% sure under the answer to this, but just for in public as well, like, it's hard approving something like this when we're in a deficit, right? Yet at the same time, I don't think we're able to, even in this type of circumstance, transfer money from capital to like a fund balance, or use that to help offset operational costs.
Right, the money that's in this account was put in that account over the years of any excess fund balances attributed to that account, and those over multiple school years, so, and the reason why you do that is for this purpose, that you don't have to borrow money and have projects like this, when every 10 years, when you have to replace your turf from your, your track, so that's why you do that.
Do we foresee any other side of, you know, if the decision would be not to move forward with a building project, if those capital funds would be for repair of existing?
Correct, we do have a project that we talked to you guys about with the Chiller here at this building, that could be a pricey one, you know, you're looking at three quarters of a million dollars, maybe or more. That's probably coming out of that $2 million turf account that we have, but that's all we see for now. Those are the two big, and then geothermal potentially, but that's not as much, but those are just, these are the two big projects we're thinking about, you know.
And if we move forward with a building project, a renovation project, would you be looking to use some of this funds for that, or would that be offset with just what we're going to be borrowing?
Well, we could do two different options, we could use some of that money to start the project, you know, you're going to have your engineering fees that you need to pay off and all that other stuff upfront, so we could use a portion of that, and then actually we can get that money refunded back to us when we do borrow, but, you know, you have options then.
And so there's always those games that you kind of, I'm not saying games, but how you can play that money is your recommendation, using the money that we have now to go towards this, or holding that money knowing if we are in a building project in a year or so, we can also fund this with that type of money.
Yeah, I think it comes down to when do you need the money, right? We need to have this project complete it, we can't go another year using this field, right? So, I think that's, that's where, we were holding this money probably for five, five to 10 years, waiting for something like this to use it on, I think that's, that's the trade-off.
You're saying we could not use this for one more year?
The turf?
Yeah.
We would struggle, I think it would, it would be breaking down.
From a safety perspective.
I mean, if you, if you're looking from the stands at the stadium, it doesn't look as bad as if you walk up on the stadium and look at it, I think it's, you know.
I think you got to, we talk field, you got to talk track, too. Tracks is getting in bad shape. Linear splits straight down to the center.
Right.
You just allow water to get underneath it, it's, it's, the track is just as bad as the turf.
Was the track done 12 years ago, too?
No, that track's an original track.
So, so we won't have to replace the track in 10 to 12 years?
What you will have to do, the track in seven years, replace the rubber, which is not that, it's, I mean, it's expensive, but not, not millions of dollars, not hundreds of thousands, so you just have to replace your rubber. It's a, first year, I think they come in and just recode, and then like 14 years, you might come and mill the, take the rubber off, not mill the blacktop, you just take the rubber off and reapply. So, yeah, and once you get your, we're talking about total, kind of like base, the track, right?
Yeah, and this is like, this, the, the age of this, this is the time, you know, you remove that surface, you got to rebuild it.
Yeah.
So, and then lock you in for, you know.
I think it was 77 probably, so the track's been there since then.
Yeah, they say, I mean, they say 20.
It was asphalt when I ran on it.
Yeah, was it?
It was asphalt.
Yeah.
It was asphalt.
That's why we don't really eat it now.
That's before the ant shoes, you know?
Yeah, sure, okay. Are Brian getting around on that?
I ran on the rubber.
You did?
Oh, it was asphalt for me. It was Pennsfield.
The other question I had is, I believe you referred to an eight-year warranty with the Land Tech.
Mm-hmm.
I see here the, I mispronounced this.
Yeah, they have a different turf system with a 10-year warranty.
Is that, in your opinion, I mean, you know, considerable amount more of it, from a warranty perspective?
It's, with a warranty, it's like, the warranty's protected against a major failure, and there have been times, I mean, years ago, when they first came out with what's called monofilament-type fields, they're two different types of turfs, you know, turf fibers, the slip film, which is like the first generation, and literally, why it's called slip film is actually, it's like a tape and a break, those are like, that's the workhorse, that takes a lot of beating. Monofilament looks more like a grass, you know, blade, in the first generation, what was happening was they were kind of pushed and like, hey, great, you know, what happens though, you have to maintain these fields, because if you, like, you, like, that Gold Mouse and stuff like that, get worn down, fibers start to go over, and you start running on the side of them, they break down. That first generation of monofilament, fields are breaking down like six years into, you know, the warranty, you know, within the warranty. But, you know, if there's a major, you know, a, a major issue with the, with the system, then, I've seen things, you know, usually it's not related to the turf, it's related to like the sun base, some did a failure in the sun base, you know, so you should be careful. 10 years, yeah, it's, it's fine, but, yeah, it comes at a cost.
That's also, that's also an add, so when we want the 10-year, we'd be paying 15.5.
Yeah, yeah.
It's an add, so if you say you want a 10-year warranty, that would be a.
Oh, I see, I see what you mean.
That is not a basic add.
Okay, gotcha.
So they're offering a difference, turf with a 10-year warranty versus the base.
Okay. And then the other thing I see here on, was, on the proposal, when you're looking at page five, it has green's groomer, not, never taken care of, but my question is, is there any existing equipment we have that we can continue to utilize with the new?
Just like the field itself, it wears out over time, so, I mean, for what we're, being in the good to cost, I mean, it's, it's worth it, to actually maintain the field.
Well, we've noted, and actually, when you're, I don't know how many years ago we replaced, we were in Pennsfield, you know, they're working out of Zurich, and they, the thing they had over there was like, it was like literally carrying the field up, and so, and they've got a new system because it was, they're a little better, easier to operate, a little more turf friendly than the old monsters were, I mean, it was.
Yeah, there's basically just a bunch of spikes that come down at the bottom, they all wouldn't want to drag it across our field right now.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's, they, they do wear out, so, and, so, and the Gmax testing is, is the, we actually require in the specification to, for the manufacturer to come back during the life of the warranty to test for Gmax, so, and that's, and if you do have, who's, are they testing now?
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, we do require that, so, because your Gmax is a shock continuation.
And when we were under warranty with Field Turf last time, they did the grooming twice a year at no cost, while it was under warranty.
So, the Gmax.
That's a saving right there.
Yeah, the, the Gmax too, it's like, our requirement, the industry standard is 200, which is kind of like falling on the floor here, which, oh, I can't, so, you know, our specs are 165, but, you know, and, and the systems that have been, the newer systems seem, so far, I mean, have been, it seems that's not, not a problem, you put 165. You don't want it too soft either, that's the other thing. When it's new, it's going to be, you know, spongy, like, it's like, you know, you'll feel it, but it'll compact over, over time enough, so.
I have a, I just have two questions, I don't have, pardon me, how much are we talking to do the, the field and the track?
1.7.
1.7, no?
Right around there, right?
Okay. And then, do we, do you know how much we were paying each year to maintain this field? Is there any, just curious if you.
With the turf field, we, in the last couple of years, we paid about $3,000, I think about $3,000 to groom it twice a year.
Okay, so like even like repairs?
Repairs were included in that cost.
Okay, so nothing.
We never, we never ran into repairs that came with higher than that, so they include certain.
I knew you were going with that, Brian, I like. Well, I was just thinking, like, if we were spending, you know, $100,000 a year trying to maintain this, I mean, it's going to pay itself back in the 10 years.
It offsets the operational budget as well.
But it didn't sound like you were going to have no cost, which is, I guess, good because once we put this new field in, I mean, we're, we're having.
Well, here, like, eight years under warranty, there is any damage, they come in, they call to us, you know, tares, they groom it, they maintain it, they keep after it, so it really does, we, it's kind of made this free for us at that point.
And then, I do have a third question. What other color options do we have? I know you have orange here, but.
Where's the orange?
Is that what this is?
It's, it's like, it's, it's the color red, it's, it's the printer, but it's like a terracotta, your standard track color, that's.
He's saying that color though holds up better than other colors.
Yeah. Because of the sun?
Yeah, UV, yeah.
So, like, can you pick any color you want, or?
Yeah, yeah, like, E town, we did blue.
So you could do yellow?
You, there is yellow track, but that, again, that, it's, I always guess, you know, you have all the sports shows, it's like, you know, you go there and like, and, you know, you talk to them, it's like, hey, it's basically the same amount of UV, you know, but why does the blue fade quicker, why does the yellow fade quicker, why does, you know, we did a purple one from Effort years ago.
Yeah.
It was like, oh, you sure you want, you sure you want?
So red, then what's the second, do you know what the second color is that fades the least?
Black, probably.
Probably black, probably black.
I don't know, I'm just stuck on the red, but, you know.
Yeah, I don't like the red either, but.
I feel like it's not our colors, but that's just my opinion.
Whatever that is.
I mean, black.
Whatever less.
We have it now, right? Is it just fading, or is it actually the wear and tear holds up better with the color red?
It, it, it's, it holds, I mean, it holds up better because it has less UV damage compared to others, others, and that's, that for years also was a major issue with the turf breaking down with the UV, but they kind of chemicals nowadays, again, 12 years is, yeah, I mean, that seems to be going right now, unless it's a field that is not maintained and beaten up.
Because that's the color we're going to live with for a long time, until.
Seven years.
So you.
If you change it then, if you really wanted to, you could, but.
But, okay, so even if we didn't go with, are we not going to get seven years if we wanted a different color, I guess?
You could save.
You're just going to get, you're just going to get a fade, it's going to be faded.
It'll be faded, it will, yeah, it pops.
So you're saying during the remilling process, you can change your color.
You'll have to, it's going to quiet, it's going to tear all along.
I see people getting.
More expensive.
I've seen people that have used.
It costs more, because when they do the, when they recode, they're just coming back to put another layer on. If you want to change the color to seven years, they'll have to spray bear everything off, or you'll see the red bleeding through the black, or whatever color you decide to go with.
I think the public, like, we know because we're being told this, but how much is the public going to know that when they show up and they see a red track, they're going to be like?
Don't Brian wanted red, they're going to talk to Brian.
I thought the red one was, it wouldn't be as hot, because it's not black, it has the reflection. And it does make the field, the actual field, what we're doing, the blue trim, right now it's all green, so we have a blue trim around our field. And then the end, it just kind of, I think the field stands out more, so the golden knights and everything that, with the blue end zone. And we're looking at striping the field, so you have alternating light, feather green, dark.
I like that, I do like that.
I think it'll really, it's just gonna make the field stand out, like, and everybody track, I think, makes it.
So is that what we're doing, we're doing the golden knights?
What'd you want?
Eastern York. With the, I like the emblem in the middle. I'm serious, I, I think it should say Eastern York, not Golden Knights, we are Eastern York.
I'll leave that up to the marketing.
I'm still stuck on the red, so I'll, you guys can decide. I care about the price.
I'm, I'm, I just, yeah, I care about the price too.
I care about the price, I care about it.
Yeah, we, yeah, I mean, we provided a couple of options there, I mean, and that too, it's the same number, that's like a per letter call. They call it donated, so it really wouldn't matter.
I mean, we don't, we, once we approve the contract, we're gonna have to meet, they're gonna take the filter and finalize all the colors, right? I mean, if we end up going to a black track and they're decreasing or the same price.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you go, yeah, black, it's probably a standard cost.
So, you could do that, I mean, or, and we can change the end zone labeling, I mean, we get end zones. But it will all be, once we approve the contract with Field Turf, then we would sit down and say, okay, let's finalize our colors for our, all of our game lines, colors have to be finalized and all that, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do.
We can have a meeting, we'll have a big meeting on colors.
He's saying just pass, pass the price.
Yeah, I got you.
You can pick whatever you want, Brian.
Well, that, Brian, you can have a whole purple line or a blue.
Yeah, it's, yeah, and, well, they'll send.
I'll get blue or gold, that's what's me.
They'll, I don't know.
I like that, but.
They're gonna send.
I'm only one guy, so.
They're gonna send, send up like a graphic of the field to prove, they're also gonna do a track line plan. Because, no offense to any track coaches or any, everyone always wants something a little different. So, that's why if they do the track line, we said, give the district, and say, all right, what do you want, you know, wanna do this, that, that, and they, you know, so. And that's the other thing too, like I said, you know, timing wise, if things get delayed a little bit, that would be the issue with the surfacing, but also the line striping guys. It is, and there's like, I don't know, three or four of them that travel, literally travel the country in an RV, and that's what they do for a living, and it's quite the life.
Yeah, I watch them do.
Yeah, and it's, because the guys.
The way they lay it out, I tell you.
There's some of our old guys in sandals and shorts on, and whoosh, they're like perfect.
There's a husband and wife that came and did ours.
That's it, yeah, so.
All right, last question for me, from the Land Tech, I take it you said they've been around for a while, they did our last track, or the Field Turf. Are there any bad experiences in the area, or tracks that you know of where something was done?
No, 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 by Land Tech or by, by, just tracks in general?
Yeah, I guess, well, I guess just tracks in general.
Only, only, in only cases I have seen that have been issues have been when finding out what's there, you know, like, like it was two inches, you know. And if it's, if there's been any failure, and fully admit to this, we worked on a work project, a stadium project years ago. I don't know if anyone remembers what happened over there, it was a sinkhole, it was something like that. Or even I kind of spoke to Valley years ago, you know, the, the worker, the works over there called me up and he's standing in the sinkhole, and it was like, what, the day before was a hole this big underneath the grandstand. And he came to the site the next day, the hole was yam white, and then the whole side of the one track collapsed. And literally you could drive a car in there, it, so, all, just a little hole.
Just from my experience when I was here when I checked it, and I, I mean, I could not, I mean, they did an outstanding job, I mean, everything that we needed or anything was missed, they fixed right away. And everyone, Johnny on the spot about things, and easy to talk to, so.
Yeah, I, I have found.
We, we had a pretty good relationship working with them at that point.
I have found, I have, I have found that when they're, and you could, you'd wanna call some districts up, but, you know, you, you experienced them here. They're a contractor that I think something comes up to work, it's not like do it, then like here's the change, or, you know, and most of the, most of the guys in this industry are like that, unless something major crops, something like a sinkhole, or, you know, I mean, that's still usually something out of the, out of the control. That's the whole thing, you, you don't know what's underground, like, you should be fine here, because it's an existing field, but a new field, like, you know, like, well, we're gonna be doing the tasky right now, it's gonna be renovating their stadium, and there's nothing to rock, it's horrible, how much rocks there, but, you know, they know it, and, you know, so they're gonna, you know. Actually, they're gonna be working on that project too, so, they're gonna be in this area, so.
And you still put those rubber BBs all over the place on that field?
On the turf, yes, it'll be a mix of rubber, sand.
And in your shoes?
Yes, yeah, in shoes, all our systems cost more. I, we, we found that usually the issue, issue is more close, closer to Philadelphia when it comes to health, health issues and cancers and stuff. Couple, a couple of months ago, there was an article in the Inquirer about Phillies players, like their involvement and all that in the bet. And that trigger, the whole group of neighbors coming out against, like, Governor Valley was doing a major project, and they kept pointing to their article in the Inquirer. There's so many holes in that, but it's, it's the media, so, you know. Any other questions? Ready to vote? All those in favor, speaking five, I say a nine. Troy, can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
All right, any opposed? Okay, I just have it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want more comments?
Yeah, definitely.
The executive session tonight, so do I have a motion and a second to a.